All right. We're starting to get started late. We've got six to three. We'll go ahead and pause. Name of the order. Can I get a roll call?
Thank you. I'm back. Mr. James Cawthorne?
Here.
Mr. Eric Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Joseph Hewitt?
Here.
I will mark that Mr. Fred Manning and Mr. Kane O'Leary are absent.
Okay. Per KRS-83806, so four constitutes form. We're actually looking at that before, I'm not sure. So that does constitute form. So if you would, allow us to play.
(Inaudible)
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 All right.
Thank you very much for coming up late. We've got the agenda in progress. I know there's two additions that we need to make. If we could, we'll put back in old business, ILC, we'll put North and East Street. And then, if that was in old business, and in new business, ILD. Do I just outlet small sign?
Antique mall.
Antique mall sign. Anybody else have anything?
Yes, I do. I work for, um, New Business, Rockland Ridge.
Okay. You want to do it in new business or on the reports and products? Okay. Or put it, make that ILC. All right. Anybody else? Jamie, we're all alone over there tonight.
Yes.
You want to see the pleasure? Um, anybody else? All right. Any retaining motion to accept the attorney? Motion by Sarah, or second. Second by Carissa. All in favor? I know you didn't get a chance to see these minutes earlier.
Oh, no.
(Inaudible) Second by Sarah. All in favor? Want your character. All right. Fire Department didn't have a chance to get their fire report together yet, so they asked to move on to the second one. Chief Gillis?
It's the September stats later in the year.
I know they've been working all the way to kind of streamline some of the reporting, there's a lot of information there. I know that they're working with a new feature. We just included it on here on the scroll down page. But they can actually show, this is kind of just a graphical representation of where the incidents are. But that's the same per number incidents or whatever, as to graphically where they are. We'll continue to work to get that report finalized, to finalize some graphical ways to show you the same statistics. Is there any question on this? Any questions from Chief Gillis?
Please remember, we have, what was the category from September?
It seems they have the summer comparison.
I, um, why does the certification next Monday or Tuesday? I'm trying to figure it out. But he should, I think Danny said it was next Monday or Tuesday. So that's, once he passes that certification test, then it'll be that. And it'll be, so we're ready to go.
Okay. Sorry for the beautiful?
Oh, yeah. Now, he's using his pressure right now still. It doesn't, it has the regular pressure sheet that's in the back. The stuff is all real, but we just don't have it yet. Let's say we'll get all of that in the next month, just let's take the time with the bat. All right. No other questions? All right. Jamie's not here tonight for the water report. This is just the, oh, he calls it something. Ken, what does he call this report today?
It's just a monthly.
Acte?
Bacteria, bacteria result.
This is basically a test of chlorine to see what happened there. We're going to post it each time we get things. Um, and for the sewer department, Ken, you have, I've got your quarterly results.
Yeah, that's for the month of September there. 370 on the VOD is a little high, of course, but that's due to the heat in the atmosphere. And the ammonia's a little high due to the large volume we're seeing out here in our businesses now. Everything else is in compliance. 200 is the remeter on the VOD, but that's just slightly over when you're talking no ramp for later. So we just continue to work on that, getting that down.
Excuse me. What's VOD sample?
That is the biochemical oxygen demand.
Biochemical?
Oxygen demand, which is in the wastewater, which is a pretty sophisticated formula that goes to the sewer plant that I could spend hours telling you about. It's just something that they check for to make sure that we're not sending them something we're not supposed to. Okay?
The test is on, we've got the water.
That's all the metals that we check for in the wastewater and just make sure that, you know, we're sending them what we're supposed to be sending and not something else. That's all that is.
Any questions on the sewer department?
Just an update, Mara, on the McDonald's rebuild out there. We've provided the engineers with everything. I'd like to give thanks to Williamstown Sewer Department for coming up and going to the camera workforce this week. We got to look at the stubs that is on right there on Thar Jean and was potential for McDonald's to close that manhole. So everything should, they've been provided everything, so everything should be moving forward with that project hopefully pretty soon.
Okay. Anything else? Any question? On the road department, I've got street affairs priority list. If you look in your packets here, you have one of these lists. I'm actually going to do something that's a little bit impressive now. I've printed some extra ones that are up there at Blue Dennis. Those are up here on the sheet on the park. If you want to take one of these and help us grade the streets in the city. I know we did this last year and it actually gave us a starting point where to start with the streets. What we, what we need to do with this is just regrade the streets so that we can continue to update that list so that we're fixing the streets that need the priority over streets that don't. And the more eyeballs we can have looking at the streets, the more, you know, more efficient the grade that we can get on it. So like I said, I made some extra copies that are up there. If anybody wants to take that with them and help us grade the streets, it'd be much appreciated for that. But council, I've got one of those in your practice. If you, if you take a little bit of time and then we'll be driving around talking to people, if you could, just kind of put a grade on the street so we can kind of go from there. Anything else on the road department?
No.
Plain and plain, Jamie's not here for that. The parks and rec, this Saturday, actually last Saturday, they had, they've been having three-on-three basketball tournaments down the park. They had a charity three-on-three tournament last Saturday. I knew I was going to forget the voice name.
Christian Ford.
Christian Ford, yes. He was just recently diagnosed with lipoma.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. They had a charity three-on-three tournament. They raised almost $400 for him at that tournament the other night. And I really, I was down there, I went down there, a lot of people showed up, it was really good time. He wasn't able to be there. He was, he's a children's hospital, but we were, we tried to give him the feed so that he could watch the game, but I think, you know, some of the games, I think they did Skype or FaceTime or something, but we really appreciate that. Next Saturday, they're having a five-on-five tournament at the park again, so they're doing this regularly. So just kind of letting everybody know. There's a link on there to Facebook page. I hope somebody will see what the details were on that. But just next week, they're having a five-on-five tournament. I have Rockland Ridge here, but we'll just skip over this and since, no, we wouldn't have managed it, so we can.
I do not see that.
That's okay. Any other questions? Brett?
Um, the acte stuff, I have nothing, but under code enforcement, I have a little report that we put together for September, in case you're at the area. I sent out four letters for nuisance compliance and those. One permit violation, and I got four complaints on different things. Did three follow-ups. And so far, on business licenses this year, we've got 537 that are active. And you'll see that there's 40 that are under review, which that means they have turned an application, but we're still waiting on the old, back payroll taxes or there's something stopping them from getting a business license, so we need to get that.
So you can see from that, we're a lot more efficient with the, with the business licenses. That's a pretty dramatic increase year to year. I'm sorry?
Yes, that we never had filed before.
And most of those were operating before, they just were operating and they're not. Any question on code enforcement?
Let's see, because that was the report, then below that there were some pictures of some of the properties. That one is 14 E Street.
Oops. Sorry.
This is actually a picture after it got, the grass and stuff got knocked down. The grass was about six foot tall.
I apologize. I'm really sorry.
And as we go through the pictures here, you'll see there's some equipment on back. This is the house that actually, we talked about last year, that has no insides. So they're going to be, I think tomorrow they're going to take it down. So, I mean, that's just, that just, and it actually backs up for our water tower there. Some of the pictures from inside.
Yeah, that's the only thing, those couple of people who are, the only thing that looks like the floor, they've taken off the load there and it's out.
It's actually, there isn't even a floor in the front, in two of them.
They've done a lot of work already, just cleaned up the brush around it, it must have been a lot.
And the next one is the other side of E Street, it's 14 E Street. It was the same way, grass was up. There was actually, I think, two years ago, some electric lines that fell. The tree fell and just crushed the fence. And I don't think Duke Company moved it, there's still lines there. It's just not attached to anything. But they're working on it, they're going to actually get done with the other house. And the back door has been kicked open, so I don't know if anyone's been inside or not. But they're going to board that one up.
Structurally, I think Fire Department's already.
Yeah.
Didn't affect on this, but structurally, this building was sound, so they didn't need to be pulling it out yet. It just needs to be secured. This is the same situation on this one as with the other one. There's a registered owner, but we cannot make contact with him whatsoever.
See, I've posted a newspaper and also put a post up there saying you're going to contact us.
Did they pay their taxes?
Yeah. But I've sent them letters, registered letters, and nobody has given them a return. Now, this is Telstar, the old Telstar Park. Now, our guys did maintain the road drainage area of it, but there's just too much room to handle without, so we said clean the whole property. So, I mean, now you can actually see the lower roads and we do, these are pictures of the lower roads.
You couldn't even see where the road was before, did you?
Oh, yeah, I could see that.
I don't know. This was before, but this is the part that the city is maintaining.
Yeah, and they've cleared the tree line out because it used to be a lot more dense.
This is packed, right?
Yes.
The magic difference. I mean, it really looked bad when we were traveling on that Warsaw road, so we really tried to clear that out. Big.
Well, see, the next thing, I know we got the Old Studio 25, it's around 30, 33 South Main. We go into the pictures of the curtain, but I know the owner's down to clean it up, we talked to him, and they were down there today, actually inside. There was just garbage out inside, but they've been down inside the last week, they're working to get it cleaned up.
What are they trying to do with this? Is it bigger?
What are they not doing with that?
The South Main?
Yeah.
I can't get it out. It is. It's been this way all day, and we can attest, everything that's going on is not going to be good.
He's called it no say for your birthday. He thought it was going to be.
Anything else for Brett?
Also, we've got the parking under, we'll just wait until old business.
Yeah. All right. Under ABC, I told you last month I didn't have time to get the applications on there. Let me see if I can. Um, there's three, or no, two applications, two new applications, Dryage BP and a new place called Liquor Box. All of their information is just right here, we won't have the time to get through all of that, but you're welcome to look at it.
Liquor Box?
Liquor Box. It's, um, next to the Dollar General store.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, 66 Warsaw Avenue. On Waffle House.
What?
So.
T L C R.
T L C R, that's correct. But all of that information is there if you want to look at the applications. There were three renewals in the last couple of weeks. There's two renewals cycles for ABC. There's, Red County is in a cycle where all businesses renew in June. Their names expire in June early, so July first, they're all, they have to be relicensed. Except for corporations or, or, well, except for corporations. And they have a, an August 30 deadline. So that's the reason why you see renewals for Speedway and Walmart later than all of the other ones that were back in July, June and July. But that's, this is all their applications. So if you, if you want to take a look at those, you're really welcome to look at those. And that also includes some payments and their licenses. In marriage reports, the only, there's two things I just wanted to quickly go over. This is the first year in, in the history of the city, not only are you able to pay your utility bills, but this tax season, you're actually able to pay your taxes online. And I can say it works because I paid mine online Friday, I think, which simply put this just a lot, just to test it out. It's, it's actually fairly simple. I'm going to zoom this back out again. Wonder if it's pictures there? Make it jump around. If you'll, when you go to our homepage, if you scroll down here to the bottom, you'll see two things where you can either pay your utilities or you can do a tax search. If you do a tax search, it takes you to a new page. And you can search for either by a name or a street. So if any of you got your water bills, there's a newsletter in there that explains how the process works. So I didn't have any problem with my tax bill, which I'll put it on again. So if I search for L and K, I'll just type in Allen. It'll show me a listing of all of the properties on L and K. So I can just find my house, which is 25, and I can just click on the map number. And I can either view the charges, assessments, or just make a payment right from there. Of course, I'm not going to, I've already paid it. So when I click on it, it says my account has already been paid, which is great. Or somebody else would have paid it, but I didn't pay it. But anyway, so that information.
Is the monitor, the map for sure?
Um, there's the last. If you pay it, if you pay it now, it's $289, so. That's what the discount. All right. So only reason that's kind of important is it's the first time you've ever been able to do that. I think this is the first year the county is actually doing that too. A lot of people have asked for this, so we'll actually do it. The other thing I wanted to show you, and we're going to start giving this to you on a monthly basis, is the vehicle fuel reports. All right. We've, we've been using the new fuel tracking, or vehicle tracking system for a month now, so we're able to generate reports. So here's what we're, what we can actually generate out of, out of this system. And this is things I want you to look at. Last month, between the vehicle, the fleet, the city fleet, we drove just short of 14,000 miles and consumed about almost 1,200 gallons of gasoline, or fuel, I should say fuel. And then that gives us our fuel costs and our average miles to gallon and our run times and things, just some different, different statistics. What's interesting, if you scroll down through here, and I don't know if I can get every vehicle on from our, actually. But what this report will show is it will show you the, it'll show you the vehicle. This is, this is the vehicle name or who it is designed to. It'll show you what the vehicle is, how many days out of the 30-day period it was driven or operated, how many miles that it went, how much gas, the diesel fuel it used, what the cost was, and what the beginning odometer is and ending odometer. And then I think this is.
Miles per gallon.
Is that, is that one miles per gallon?
Yeah.
Okay, this is hours. Is that idle hours?
Run time.
That's run time? Is this idle hours?
Yeah.
Okay. This is the amount of time in hours this vehicle idled. And then this is gallons per hour, and then there's the breakdown. But what's interesting to see out of this report is where many big knowledge is are, like EC4 is the ambulance that lives, it's a 2016, it's not even a year old yet. It splits about 4,000 miles a month on. Like I said, that vehicle's got 44,000 miles on it already and it's not 10,000 old. But we're going to start giving you this, this report. We won't nearly take this much time from now on, and I just wanted to show it to you so you can see what is there. It's a handy tool to see where our deficiencies are.
And that's on the internet?
Yes. If you want to see specific details, I can get those running specific reports for you. All right. Any questions? Moving on into old business. Item on on old business is Church Street, Haywood. A few months ago, when we put this out, we had, we had a couple contractors come in and talk to us about it. Mr. Evans is with us today. Mr. Evans hasn't been paid yet on the job. And up until just a few weeks ago, several weeks ago, the job hasn't been completed. And I think there's some deficiencies in the way that the project was done. And long story short, I talked to Mr. Evans. We met down there, Ken met with us. We looked at the project. There were some of the specs that were done exactly the way it was supposed to be done. Long story short, I asked him if he would give us a guarantee on the work that was done for five years. After talking with Pete, he suggested that we talk about this at council and we could actually take a field trip. We're going to do this a little bit different tonight, but we're actually going to take a field trip. I hope everybody brought their jackets with them. We're actually going to take a trip down to Church Street. We're going to look at the two areas that we're talking about, and then we can discuss that. Now, in order to keep the, a public meeting still public, we have to invite all of the public with us. So Mr. Brockman's been gracious enough to bring his tour bus, the trolley. So if you guys would, we're going to continue this meeting at Church Street.
Well, maybe you can get the trolley too.
I'll drive.
We'll just stay here. Okay.
Hi, I'm on a, what's that, I can't even hear stuff.
Hey Ken, what's this gonna accomplish?
I'm real sure, there's one thing, if you look at where the street looks, bird's eye view or something.
I think that more than I do.
Control.
The people that's coming, or that's sitting.
I don't think that is.
No.
They'll know as much as we do when they get back to church.
Is it that bad?
Are you gonna go?
No, I'll stay here, you need me to go?
Yeah, Ken, you were doing some of that.
Absolutely.
Where you going, buddy?
See what you're doing.
I thought you were the driver.
Nah, no, I'm driving.
You don't drive?
I do sometimes.
Did you sit in charge?
I let John drive.
Oh.
Good job, boy, I do.
You got that station fixed up?
Yeah, I got the outside, I ain't got the inside. I got all the stuff out here inside, but I ain't got, I didn't get those cleaning up yet. Finally, alright. Take a quick.
There's your fucking money.
Finished up.
How's your mother, Ricky?
What, any more?
How's your mother?
Yeah, she's alright. She don't drink, both of them. She's going back to dr.
Keeping busy?
Well, we already lost one guy for a back injury, probably.
Need to keep her out of traffic?
Yeah, Danny Redd. That, that one back injury, thanks for that. They're not permanently disabled. His kids get a check, his kids get free college. He picked up a six hundred pound female one day.
Can be true.
Yeah, it's amazing. You could have to go out in the middle of the week and throw it back up.
Did you say a six hundred pound female?
Yeah, we got them all over Grant County.
Are you serious?
We got one person, it's a, it's a guy that weighs eight hundred pounds at Grant Manor. Yeah, the R C S trying to get him out there.
I have never seen him that way.
Go to Grant Manor. There's a female that weighs four hundred and something, and he weighs eight hundred. We had them all, both patients, in fifteen minutes apart.
Is that why every time y'all buy an egg, once it gets bigger and bigger?
Well, do you all have a, what do you call them, your stretcher or?
We just got, just, they just deliver them, we got a federal tank. Stretcher, hit a button now that raises up and down.
I mean, are they?
They're, they can pick up, they can carry over seven hundred pounds with, with one cock.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, God, you made me laugh.
No, we still throw them on, hopefully, they just don't go down.
Hey, when the money, he was seven hundred pounds, he died then, breaking, no, giving out.
We actually, we had a guy in Colorado in early nineties, we actually had to cut the back of a trailer out to get him out. Cause he was over seven hundred.
I wanna ask you, Field's cousin, her husband passed away in March, and Mike weighed about three fifty. So they had to get a bigger casket, matter of fact, Mike caused Stanley instead, it was gonna be five hundred dollars more. But so if you weigh six or eight hundred, what kind of, do they make a casket?
Oh yeah, they make, especially.
Do they?
Yeah.
Or she had to pay five hundred more for just somebody weighing three fifty. That's awful.
Dog. I'm about it. I'm trying to get that dog. Is that supposed to be seventy-five, actually? Is that supposed to be seventy-five, actually? I sleep there.
You know, you know, for a dog out there.
They can't even stop selling. Oh, while I'm thinking of it, I'm probably just taking my car in for a bigger fare. Cause I think my friend ain't selling it like KJ's doing. Bullshit. That's not a worthy thing, I think, or. Which has us, my car's coming down. He'll check for me Wednesday. Man, it's been a popping and cracking a lot. This morning, it's bad. Every time, every time I was driving low speed, I started standing, I'd pop, pop, pop. Yeah, I started getting a little too, it was just the birds. They hold themselves like they usually would, by the way, or something. Yeah, I don't know what you're talking about, what's that again? I don't know what they're on that board.
How much money did we lose on that?
About fifty thousand.
Are you serious? Even my son asked me, he saw it on Facebook, he said, Mom, why would you all lose such a thing? I said, I have no idea.
Well, the bad thing is, you don't, fourth of July weekend, everybody's out, you're out camping and everything else. You need to find a day that.
Plus you know, plus you know, spend forty grand on a guy.
I, that, see, that's what he said, how would you all spend that much money on him? Or anybody, really. I didn't even know who that guy was.
Yeah, Chris Stapleton, and he backed out for forty thousand, he went a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Chris Stapleton, they had him kinda booked, and when he got early, won all the awards. He went from forty to one seventy-five.
Yeah, he won all the awards, he said, no way. Well, at least we didn't do that.
Did they just play one evening? One show, one hour? Well, that's crazy, that's crazy.
Well, the bad thing too, they had the car show at eleven o'clock, and at one o'clock, everybody left.
Left, right.
And there was nothing between one until then, it's getting people back.
Right.
They need to figure out how to get more stuff and cars earlier than doing it in the morning.
It'd make more than a shindig out of that car show.
So it was really poor planning, too?
Well, it's first time, so.
They actually need to have a car show later in the day.
Yeah. And have more stuff for kids and everybody else. When you got like two blowups, kids are gonna get bored, and they're just gonna, parents leave them, and everything else.
As far as the music, I don't, I mean, I, I think we've done alright, found some local people that can play bluegrass or something. They're gonna want to get their name out there and play cheap, you know? And do a good job, but, you know, cause it's a benefit to them to advertise themselves.
You find a lot of good local, not, you know, not famous people that do bluegrass, cause we go to a lot of bluegrass festivals and things. You wouldn't have to pay them forty thousand. What's up, think about that, I thought it should be closed.
Man, four million a year.
Well, let me ask you this, you guys know better than me, but someone said to me when I said that, well, we would have to haul the prisoners, I think, at this particular case, that someone was taken or they had to go to Grayson. Look, I know where Grayson is, you know, like a three hour trip, is that, is that unreasonable?
I used to work in an apartment that was in that situation, it was a nightmare.
Was it?
Because one of two things, first of all, you have a jailer. Even if you don't have a jail, you have a jailer, you still pay him salary. So it can either be his duty to hire a couple of people to play taxicab, which is what we had, it was Harrison County, I used to work over there. I arrested somebody, I took him to the substation, and I sit there and I waited on the jailer to come in. We ran, we ran into situations where a jailer would take a prisoner, get out on transport, three hours, three hours one way. And then I would arrest somebody, well, he's only an hour going out, I gotta sit with that guy for five hours. They're just sitting there, and if this guy's combatant, it's not a happy day. But the thing is, you're taking me off the street for five hours, my ship's only eight hours. I'm useless. So option B is I do the transport.
Cause there's pros and cons, though, or?
Yeah, so if option D, still, I'm going for six hours out of my ship. And if I arrest someone two hours before the end of my shift, now the city's gonna pay me overtime. City's gotta pay gasoline, and my, uh, mileage and wear and tear on my car, car's gonna break down quick, you gotta replace your cars quicker. You know, especially since the city's gonna be picking up that burden. It's just better. And any of the county found out how much cheaper it is just to have your own jail. Because these other counties, they don't wanna do, they don't wanna, they don't want our prisoners, because they're already getting overcrowded, so then it becomes a marketing strategy. We'll just, they're just gonna keep pumping up the price because they can.
I wanna know, though, are all jails like this one? The correctness up here has been ridiculous. Are they all like this one?
No, I'm not saying all the jails are like this.
Well, what's the whole big, I mean, I know there's bad and everything, don't get me wrong, I know. But it's just things like this, it's been year after year after year, there's something. What is it?
I think it's just all big bunch of politics. Ain't all big bunch of politics.
Well, that's what everything is, it's either politics or money.
It's been a nightmare since they opened it.
That's why.
It's been a nightmare since they opened it.
Since Louis Jackson, it's been a nightmare.
Right, that's what I said, ever since Louis, right?
Because Louis, he didn't, he wasn't gonna do none of that, he just didn't do that shit for crap.
Right, and why did, why do they do it, for money?
Well, times change, it's any law, it's any chance, okay, they settle. They won't, it's okay, we're gonna fight this, they don't, it's easier to settle than to just fight it, it's cheaper that way.
Does that people's as bad as they said, all that stuff that was in the paper?
This is like, the county's gonna spend four million dollars a year, roughly four million a year for a jail. They're not paying deadly for fire, EMS, facial tech.
Right.
And I was talking to Judge a month ago, I said, you wanna go down, it's the only people know you is about this jail. Nothing else, cause for two years straight, you go in this jail, you ain't bringing no businesses in, you ain't helping emergency services. If it wasn't for Dry Ridge paying for the ambulance service, Grant County wouldn't have no ambulance service, period. Cause Royal Metro is up north, transport. The city of Dry Ridge is paying for the whole thing, period.
But why?
Yeah, why?
See, he has ten more years left.
He's got ten more years.
Well, the, the city of Dry Ridge had the COA for the whole count when they got it, they helped Transcare, but since Royal Metro is not here, they don't have the contract, they're making money doing transport and leaving the nine one one service, they don't care. Cause they ain't making really much.
Why can't Dry Ridge charge the credit, then? Why can't they charge Williamstown?
I think that's what they're trying to do, but.
That's what should be done.
I mean, you guys, these guys don't go to Williamstown and work for nothing.
They go back up Williamstown.
Well, they shouldn't.
They do.
Well, we go back up Williamstown, but if something.
Well, back 'em up, I mean, but not.
If something's going down, Williamstown's gonna come up helping us.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm saying, they're not going down there all.
Yeah, we signed a major late agreement for all the cities too in Grant County, so you're gonna get happy. That's why you look at that two thousand sixteen ambulance, it's forty-four, almost forty-four thou, over forty-four thousand miles on it, and we got it last July.
But this don't make sense why we didn't pay for them guys.
County has to pay for an ambulance service, period. That's basically what the county is, it's, they got everything for free all these years, and they still think it's gonna be for free. They were still back stuck in the seventies, honestly, it's still stuck back in there. They don't wanna move forward.
The trick is doing that transition, because you, it's awful hard to say, well, if you don't pay us something, we're just not gonna pick up your patients. Because, because then you have people dying. You can't do that, you know? Regardless of who's at fault, we're kind of moral issue here.
Yeah, but there's some, should be something done that they have to contribute.
Probably the best thing you can do is just start, we're gonna start charging you. Here's an invoice, you don't pay it, we'll start contributing.
Well, we're billed, but they, they have a couple billings, and it's, you know, it goes soft billing.
Have they done? Have they done? I don't think Gail should've went.
Well, don't you make a list.
You don't tell me. You. You have to sign a file.
Oh, yeah, I see this. He must like, what did he do?
Evans has signed a file, and Fields, there's no thing.
I got two wish, and I don't know what is it.
What's wrong?
I don't know, I don't know what they're doing, I didn't even know what they were doing.
He don't, he won't pay Jimmy, he's known, he's been like, that, there's like, cause they overlaid it in the mail. Says one of them, none of them get in there. I see all kinds of streets, you know, they went down. Oh, that league is, that's the reason I didn't do that, I'm pretty sure I didn't know nothing about black. I'm gonna look at them, whether they know anything about black crap, I don't.
They don't do much that now. The toll program, the T nine, the toll program, it's probably something else.
I guess you'll ever write about, and I'm sure that's.
We're just gonna get that to KJ. I'll figure about that program, I know, but he won't do it, so. He goes down, and then it's out there. He won't do it. We'll broke this out, it's gonna be just like the cap, but what you gonna do is, that cool crap thing I gotta do, do that, do that. And then share what that dog's doing, and he won't do it.
I wanna ask you all about that, why do we need a dog?
Well, the dog makes it a lot easier for us to find dogs, because.
That we already have two?
Huh?
I didn't know already two in the county.
There may be two in the county, but there's not two on the street. Uh, no one's tied up in a school, and it's all, it's all that dog sees and hollers, where's the other one? And they're not, they're not out there for patrol officer to utilize.
So you all need it?
We're gonna get one for us, yeah. It, it's just, people have constitutional rights, and I'm all for that, and, you know, we have, we have to play by the rules. But what it is, me as a human being, because I may be a malicious person and stop someone, and snoop around their car, and I guess puts on Facebook what I see, I don't know. But a dog doesn't have that maliciousness about it. It, the dog just, it sniff, and if it smells drugs, it alerts, and that gives us probable cause. So now I can legally get in that car, I can do things that I couldn't do before. But without the dog, it, it's near impossible for us to get in a car. And once we have a search warrant, but to get the search warrant, we gotta have enough information to articulate the search warrant. So a lot of what we do, is we stop the car, and we've all been on the street, well, now, we know what we're looking for. We, you know, we know the little indicators and stuff, but. But when we see the indicators, but we don't have probable cause to get that search warrant, that's when we just start asking, can I search your vehicle? All this person has to do is say, no. And we're done. I get a dog and that dog sniffs and alerts, and the dog's saying, hey, there's dope in that car. Now I don't have to have a search warrant.
Well, what is, did I see out on the interstate when I'm traveling and I'll see a couple of state troopers?
Uh-huh.
And they'll have somebody, and they'll have the trunk open and the doors open, and I mean, they look like they're doing a really thorough search.
Well, if, if somebody-
Why is that?
If somebody gives us consent for search, if I ask, can I search your car, and the person says, no.
Then they have to, the person in the, driving the car has to give consent for them to do that.
Yeah, and depending on who else is in the car, they may have to give, they may have to give consent too.
We've seen two or three, you know, troopers around one vehicle, and it's like, something's going on, I guess.
Well, when we search a car, we don't wanna do it by ourselves because what am I doing with my bad guys? You know, I don't want to turn my back on them. And I can't just put them in my car and lock them up. If it's, if it's a consent for search, if they've given me permission, they have to be able to retract that. So if I put them in the back of my car and I can't hear them, then they can't say, wait, I want you to stop now. So they have to be out, they have to be able to see what I'm doing. So you've got probably, at least one or probably two other officers there watching them. And just, you know, basically making sure they don't attack me.
Yeah, that's true. People are evil.
Yeah.
They're truly evil. Do you all find a lot of drugs?
Is it?
The bad drug?
Yeah.
I guess-
We hardly, we hardly even worry about marijuana anymore.
I was gonna say, I don't know.
I mean, we, we've, I, I probably go out here, within an hour, find some weed if I really work at it. But right now, we're worried about the heroin. That's the big one. Heroin, the second place is now. That's, that's the two big ones we're running into. And I think that we-
They still doing that meth a lot?
And did we not just have, did we not just have some cocaine the other day? Somebody got, yeah, somebody got some coke off the street. We don't see too much of that, cause it's too expensive. But somebody did have something the other day. One of our guys got it.
I don't think they're ever gonna stop that.
No, probably just put it in.
Too much money, you know? It's, it's all money. I mean, that, do they think they're about to do this?
It's all money. They don't want to stop it. Thing is-
They don't wanna stop it.
Thing is, trying to keep it out of schools, trying to keep it away from the kids.
I've heard Grant County's the worst, isn't it? The high-
Maybe worse, a little worse compared to Williamson, but not compared to other schools throughout the state.
I said something, we said, me and Gil said something about the high school and our grandson at the time. He's at the high school now, but when he was at the middle school, he said there's probably more at the middle school. Is that true?
I don't know.
Surely not.
I wouldn't think so, but I don't know, I've never tried the middle school.
My granddaughter, she would even, she went one year to the high school and she, that was it. Just home school. Didn't wanna go there. I can't imagine being in school today, it'd be awful. He's gonna be our president. You don't know?
Yeah, kill him.
He have an ideal, though.
Nah, he knows, he don't really know.
You think it's a toss-up?
It's hard to tell. We're both idiots, so it's a matter of when you want it.
Well, I'm gonna tell you who's gonna be president, it's still him.
Yeah, swing states are really swinging right now.
Not because I want her, but she's gonna be it.
Swing states are really swinging, they can, they're right on the borderlines, all of them.
I mean, don't you think of all the people we had in our country?
Yeah, that's the best we got.
Three hundred, or three, almost four hundred million, can you imagine? This is why we had it.
That's the best we got.
That, that is sad in itself. It is, I'm telling you. I'd have never thought I'd live to see this day.
I watched that debate the other day. And I think I should run for president, because if I was on that stage, I think I could beat them both.
They got another one coming Sunday night. I, I didn't watch the first one, I'm gonna watch this one either.
Let me go for it, get back. Donald Trump, but they were not hit them.
My people's not thinking, though, it don't matter so much, is whoever gets president is gonna have, put two or three on the Supreme Court. And that's where the big issue to me is. They're probably around the country about nine. But I don't think people really care. I don't think they care.
I think people are really passionate about it, or they just don't care.
They don't care, right, you're right.
And one of the things I noticed when we did the primaries, is how many people voted for somebody that wasn't even any longer on the ballot? You know, it was, they were on the ballot, but they were done out of the race. You know, at one girl, Carla Chiarina. She was, by the time we got to the Kentucky election, she was done long gone. She done casted everything, she's not campaigning, people vote for her. So why? Why did you cast that vote? And the answer is, they don't know what's going on.
If you watch your TV enough, you know people don't know. They don't even know the vice president right now's name. They do not know our vice president, they cannot tell you. So what else do they know? Nothing.
Who's that guy? Was that extreme?
He may not come back.
I'll go home and eat. That's just like, I'd like to go out and take a poll and just ask people. How many people are currently running for president in the general election? There's four.
They would not know that, I can tell you.
I didn't know there was four until fairly recently, it's been a few weeks ago. And it was, you know, I do it, Gary Johnson was right, I still don't know the name of the girl, that fourth girl. I'm not sure what her name is.
He's a brave soul, he's made two big old gaps, you know, that didn't know.
I just don't get why they run on the age.
I mean, I don't know either, but I'm not gonna get on C and E interviews. Be interviewed. They're bad.
Yep, they are. Huh. They break down anyway. Somebody got killed, and the cops getting called, so. Didn't get killed. Too much for us.
Yeah.
I don't know where you can get a flat. You need some brakes and belts on that thing you're carrying.
Or like some seat covers, you can just cover by neck when you're laying on.
Should have put a quarter inch pant in. After school, all right. I remember playing them last night, wasn't going away.
Everything that we saw out there, the reason why I wanted to go out there is so we could actually see. I didn't think six or seven minutes, this is fourteen hours, so. So that's the reason we went out there. Now, it's still on the, on the table, what you guys want me to do.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, it wasn't in the, in the digital, is it, was it included according to, yes, sir?
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jim says that it's totally, totally just from one day to another.
Okay, and you're saying it was done same day?
Yeah. All but, the same, I think.
That's great, but it was done same day?
Yeah, it's done.
Okay. So, that, that was what I was wondering, was it or wasn't? If it was, wouldn't it say? I don't see a reason that we should require any longer of the guarantee than we would anybody else. As long as they're looking up the case. Regarding the driveway, you know, like you all said, it's pretty obvious, I don't see how the vehicle was not dragging before. I mean, I, I don't know, but like, part of me feels like, because I've been in a situation where, like, our road was, I don't know if it was our road, it wasn't on some page, but it was kind of our road. Anyway, our driveway was good. And ours, like it, it was not that great. And, like, I, I feel what they're saying, but at the same time, if it was like that before, it's not your problem. You know what I'm saying, it's not, you didn't do anything wrong, so.
I meant you back when we were there.
Right, that's what I'm saying. If, if that's true, then I don't see, I mean, I don't see a, a reason to require them to go any further than like, except in ten- Yeah, I mean, if, if the owner wants to go through and ask for the black car, or pay him to add, you know, another way of buying a black car in full driveway, but-